We're going to call the order, the work session for the County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the Supervisor's Hearing Room in Bisbee, Arizona, Melody Lane. It's in ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call, District One, Rosemeat is here.
Gomertis here.
District Three, Antonori is here. All members are present and in person. I guess we'll kick it off with Ms. Gil.
Sure. So next week, we have a fairly light week as far as meetings go, which is, everyone take a breath. So we have our regular meeting with the library district for agendas or minutes and operating transfers for budget and as well as flood control, it's the minutes and demands and a budget amendments. And jail district is the same, so no action items on those agendas next week.
Pay the bills and minutes. Oh, you got something?
Where? Oh, it's on the back, like that always pulls me up. We have one, so.
Okay. Oh, it is on the back. Yeah, so why don't you talk to us about the idea real quick?
Good morning. So thanks for having me today. Nice to see you.
Hey.
So this is a request to renew an intergovernmental agreement for our branch library located in San Azona at Ash Creek School. We've operated a branch library at that location since 1979, and for a long time, that agreement was set to auto-renew. So we had an agreement for many years that was just unchanged. Four years ago in 2021, the school district wanted to make a small change, which was to have the agreement expire every four years. So we updated the agreement at that time, and the fully executed agreement that's in Agenda Quick was adopted in 2021 with a four-year expiration, so it expires June 30th of this year. But other than that, it was identical to the agreement we had for all those years. This year, we started in January talking to the school district about renewing. We would very much like to, and so would they. It's been a successful partnership. When the agreement went to the school district's attorney, they had some clauses that they wished to add based on statutory changes for school districts. These were things that don't have operational impacts on us, but as you look at the agreement, you'll notice that it does have several new clauses at the end. So instead of ending at Section 25, it has seven additional clauses. None of those have day-to-day impact on us. They've been reviewed by Denise Riden in the county attorney's office, and she didn't have concerns. The only other changes are some differences in wording. For example, instead of starting with, this is based on these facts, it starts with recitals now, but the actual facts are the same. So the changes are pretty minimal from our point of view. The library there is small, but really important to the community, and so we hope to continue.
Even though it's small, they have access to everything in the tourism county?
Yes, sir. So the school operates it as a school library during the school day, and then we offer it as a public library
In the evening.
in the evenings and Saturdays, Fridays when the school is closed.
Where is it at to help you out versus school, Sunseats?
This one actually is in San Azona. We also have a library in Sunseats, but this one is on 181. And as you drive by, you see the school, and then the library is located in the historic schoolhouse. It's a beautiful little building, and actually, there's a brief history of the library attached in Agenda Quick as well, just in case you're interested with a picture. Very nice little library, and we've made some improvements the last couple of years that we're pretty proud of. But yes, people from the school and in the community have access to all the offerings that are part of the countywide library system, so they receive courier deliveries twice a week. They can get materials from other libraries. They have access to all of our digital resources, and it's been a really good collaboration.
Yeah. So it'll be an item for action approval, so, okay?
And you say the seven clauses they added is just...
So they're interesting. So we read them closely, and of course Denise from the county attorney's office did as well. We really appreciated her help because they were changes, but they were things related to clarifying, for example, that school workers who are in the building would be covered by the school's workers' compensation if something happened, and that county employees similarly would be covered by the county. It has a clause about e-verify records and audits, availability of funding each school year for the school district. It talks about the school district being able to cancel the agreement based on funding and some other reasons, but they could already do that. Either party could already cancel with 60 days' notice. So those were things that didn't affect our operations, and we didn't have a concern about the school wishing to add them.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Nothing on the back of the jail district?
Those back pages.
Yeah, and that's... When was the last time? I haven't talked to them in a long time. When was the last time we had like a flood district briefing on what they're up to?
Oh. Well, they'll do it during the budget work session as well, because we had, I think we did it in February, January, February, and then they'll do it, then we meet them again in June.
June, June's the next one. Did you remember that I wanted to zero out your budget this next year? No, sure is. I'd like to know what their cash carry forward is or whatever it is.
Yeah, I have to understand how it's all involved with the court.
I... I can tell you. Is that what?
No, I think we'll get to that.
New business.
Flood control district budget. We're just going to take notes to make sure we include in that budget presentation.
All right, so that's all, it's all related. So that's those three. So then we get on to the art stuff.
Yep.
All right.
So the consent agenda items, there's one from the county sheriff to approve renewal of license plates for undercover covert operations. This is basically these license plates that the Arizona Department of Transportation requires. The Board of Supervisors approve that license plates be placed on certain cars that don't have a government decal.
With no decals?
Yeah, so that for undercover work, they're not.
And the bad guys will never realize that it's the same car, same color.
I didn't get into that part of it, but that's what that's about.
Yeah, that's funny.
And then the court administration has some appointments and reappointments for pro temps. The names are listed there, and Nelsa Flores is here if you have any questions about that.
I'd like to hear whatever Nelsa has to say. Would you like to talk to Nelsa? Reappoints, reappoints. Judge Bannon, okay.
Good morning. Each year, we are required to request the approval of the Board of Supervisors for the reappointment of our justices of the peace pro tempors as well as our Superior Court pro tempore. And along with the approval of the Board for the Superior Court pro tempore, we also require the Supreme Court to approve Judge Bannon. So what the process is, once we receive approval from our Board, then we notify our Supreme Court and provide the certification of the approval from the Board that, yes, you're approving her, and that is the final step. I'll start with Superior Court. Judge Bannon is our juvenile presiding judge, and she has been working with us and her capacity as a Superior Court pro tem for 10 and a half years. And she not only serves as a judge for the court, she also serves on a committee for the Supreme Court. And this reappointment is very crucial to the court. If we would not receive an approval for her appointment, then we would need a new juvenile presiding judge. We would have to fill her spot with the Supreme Court in the committee, and the Supreme Court, or excuse me, the Superior Court Committee held by the Supreme Court, they look at processes in all of the courts throughout the state, best practices, legislative changes, and how that will impact us in our role county. Along with that, she has a caseload of 300-plus cases that she sees. She not only hears juvenile cases, she also hears domestic cases, civil cases, and at times will help with criminal settlement cases. So that will be an impact to the court delaying court proceedings, case backlog, if we were to have to fill that position or restructure those caseloads. And then that would impact the other judges on the bench, increasing their caseload as well. So it would just be very detrimental to not receive that reappointment.
Let's go back to the discussion we had in the budget thing. Supreme Court and the state have been continually ramping down, and we've been forced to ramp up.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Do you know why we don't have six divisions in six elections for judges?
Yes, and I believe it's due to the position, if I can recall, was established due to our census numbers, which required us to have an additional division. And I don't, I'm not too, I can't give you the number of what that census number is now, but does every, I don't know if everyone completes those surveys. That would give us an accurate number of how, what our population is locally, but the impact in the cases that we have coming into the court, we do need that position and that judge. And I believe her funding is also split with enhancement funds, so special revenue. And so that's how we try to fill that role for funding.
It's not based on caseload or anything like that, just...
There is also, it's population and a combination of caseload.
So Ms. Flores, you mentioned that if we didn't have Ms. Bannon, I'm glad she's there.
Me too.
So if we didn't have her there, then it would increase the caseload of the other Superior Court judges.
It would, and then it would delay how cases are being heard throughout the system. Criminal takes priority due to the time standards and the timeframes within those cases. And so then that would backlog anything in family law, civil, and so it would just overwhelm the bench with the caseloads that they have. Some of our judges have 500 cases on their caseload because they hear criminal primarily. So it depends on the case types and the type of cases that are assigned to each division, and so that would impact their numbers, and that would impact how soon somebody can receive justice in their case.
If the type of cases, you're talking about like family law and adoption stuff?
Family law, adoptions, dependencies, delinquency, yes.
So are all the other Superior Court judges able to hear all of the criminal cases that might come to them? Or are there any restrictions, for instance, on Judge Thorne on what he might hear as far as criminal cases?
Yes, so Division Three, which is Judge Thorne, he only hears guardianship and probate matters, civil, some civil, because there are some restrictions in the civil caseload, and he also hears family law matters.
It seems like the way to go, and I know this isn't the discussion for today. It seems like the way to go, maybe swap Judge Bannon and Judge Thorne, in my opinion. But that's the discussion for the day.
No, that sounds...
Thank you very much for your time and effort.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions on the Justice Court pro temps?
I can't remember if there was the name of the woman that was our personnel director for a while, and she wanted to be a pro tem judge, which...
Oh, Eldon or Doogee? Yeah, I believe she resigned.
She resigned, I think, a year ago.
Okay.
So the only pro temps that we are requesting a reappointment for are Justin Allred, Gary Raymaker. He serves as, Justin Allred serves as our part-time Justice Court pro tem for JP5. So he helps there, and that's due to volume of the caseload.
And those guys do like search warrants and stuff? Is that what they mainly do?
No, so they handle most, Judge Raymaker, he's our, Judge Allred, he does civil hearings and traffic for the justice courts. I don't know if he does a lot of criminal.
The countywide justices, you see, for emergency temporary recovery.
So they hear all of our weekend and holiday initial appearances. So every Saturday, because someone who is arrested on Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, or on a holiday, they have to be seen within 24 hours from their arrest. And so Charles Price, Gary Douglas, Nathaniel Redman, and also Judge Raymaker or Judge Allred would be available to, they're scheduled every Saturday to hear those initial appearances, to make sure that those are being heard within the appropriate time.
I don't have any longer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you for having me.
All right, so elections, ECs again, the exams, all right?
Yes, you do.
Yep.
Hearing up.
All right. Finance, we'll get the list of demands.
Liquor license application, the clerk runs through that, the Board issue public hearings, so more information to come on that at the actual meeting.
I just had a curiosity on liquor licenses. I thought the state.
They do.
Okay, so what do we do for approving?
So I'm gonna kick that over to Laura, but basically they fill out an application here first, and then we send it up to the state, I believe.
Oh, is that what it is?
That's correct. We approve it locally, and then we send it off to the state for their final approval.
Oh, okay.
Process, yeah.
Do they have, don't they have a limit? Do they have a limit? They have a limit? As far as community issue?
Well, it can't be next to a school.
But I mean, I think, you know, like Douglas Kill me has so many, or that's what I heard, I don't know.
So beer and wine is regulated differently than hard spirits, right? So those are the ones that are hard to get, right? The beer and wine ones are easier, and the restaurant ones are beer and wine, you know, those are...
Those are the expensive $40,000 ones.
Yeah, but to try to get a spirits license to be like a full-blown bar, I think there's a limit on the number of those. Those are the harder ones to get, which is beer and wine.
But we, do you have anything, Dan?
There is also a lottery process for liquor licenses as well.
But we approve all of them, and it's...
Preliminary, I guess. It's not next to a school or...
Then the public has an opportunity to say if they disagree with having that license there, so.
But the level of review within outside municipalities, right?
Yeah, within, within and without municipalities or...
Unincorporated areas.
Oh, so this is an unincorporated one?
Yeah, so that's the only ones that come to the county.
So this here, so I guess that's just the post office, so they're outside of the city limits. Interesting, okay.
Okay, so then Development Services has a lease agreement for the Board to consider with a film company to lease a hangar out at Bisbee Douglas International Airport.
I met this guy, he's from Tombstone.
Oh.
And when I was touring VDI with them, and these hangars are incredible. There's one guy out there that repaints old, like old helicopters, old airplanes, and he's been there. It's a lot of people from Mexico companies, they have a certain, I guess, talent, but it is. This is an old one. Is this one of the old ones? And is he gonna totally, like the other guy kind of totally, you know, fixed it up?
Is it a soundstage?
It's huge, these hangars in ours are huge.
Yeah, it's 12,500 square feet, and he wants to use it in a movie set.
You see the hangar?
Yeah, I've seen hangs.
That hangar.
Yeah, this is one of the four 1940s.
Potential of buying it that was put out there.
It was a player.
Went up there, took a look at it, but anyways.
Christine's here, interim director. She's been working on this since Stan left, so I'll let her...
So like two weeks.
Yeah.
Ask me anything.
How's it going?
Great, great.
What is it, is it a studio, like soundstage type?
That's what he intends to use it for.
And film in there, right?
Yep. So he will be making some improvements, which we will retain once he moves away.
What is, what kind of films does he do? Like westerns or documentaries or?
Just independent.
Independent type, so I don't know if he, it's not a drama that I know, like, you know.
And if you want, I can have him like call in or be here, so you know.
Yeah.
The lease agreement is for 20 years, but he'll, he'll get from his payment, his rent payments essentially, lease payments will do that improvement that he makes. He has to submit the receipts and everything.
How much is it?
How much is it, the lease? It is $3,750 a quarter, so $15,000 a year. It's 10 cents a square foot. That's a very good deal.
But if I remember correctly, that warehouse needs a lot of work.
It does, yeah. We did a market rent analysis, and it is below value, but it reflects the non-aeronautical use of it and the fact he will be making improvements.
Is that the one, a lot of wood, mostly wood?
Yeah, like the siding needs some work.
So he gives a lot of work he's going to get into.
Right.
So that's, the full lease is attached, and that goes into how those improvements, reimbursement or deductions will be handled.
And he must retain commercial liability insurance, which we attached.
And so how does he get on to, I mean, so say we're looking at a grant to expand those runways, right? So he would come in and go by where the terminal is and that way, and so he wouldn't be anywhere near the runways, right?
Right, there would be no conflict.
Okay.
And this will be transmitted to the FAA for approved.
Okay.
All right. Marty's up next.
We have a, yeah, Joe's been...
This is mostly you though, right, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, this is the...
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, this is requesting funds from the contingency funds, $585,000. It's gonna do a few different things. One's gonna purchase two DS 950s core tabulators and then two OptiPlex 410 letter openers. You know, as we know with the, we talked about the DS 850, you know, previously replacing those. The letter opener right now is so loud, you have to have it in its own room when you operate it. People have to have hearing protection to operate.
It's very loud.
It's very loud. Yeah, it's like, what is that?
How old is that?
I don't have an exact date, but...
Yeah, ask you.
Yeah. Yeah, it needs to be replaced there. So we're requesting to buy two of those, and then also doing remodeling of the area, which will allow better observation for the citizens to see when we're doing tabulation, when we're doing the LNA testing, they'll be able to view that as well rather than just by cameras. We will also have the cameras in the rooms as well, so this can be broadcast on the internet like they are now. It will more than double the ballot, the storage space, the ballot cage there, and it'll just make it more efficient across the board. It does require some changes over on the treasurer's side to isolate the treasurer to their own space, and that the elections will have their own space rather than having a hallway going through elections as it is now.
So the vault is going to be owned by the recorder or the...
It's the treasurer's vault that we are wanting to expand.
So who's gonna, if we put the ballots in there, who owns the ballots? The treasurer or the recorder?
Right, so they go into the treasurer's vault after the audit is done.
The supervisor owns it. And I think it's wrong that it goes into the treasurer's vault, and we should have our own vault. Sharon thinks that the statute says it has to go into the treasurer's vault, but that's probably because they expect the treasurer to be the only one in the vault.
And so this all, they go into the treasurer's vault after the election is over, and all the ballots are completely done, all recounts are over, it's been canvassed, everything. So it's all locked up and put in the treasurer's vault for the retention period.
Which is a year?
Two years.
Two years.
And then if we ever needed to access those, I believe we need a court order to enter the treasurer's vault to obtain those ballots.
Such and such a cage or something like that?
Yeah, the ballot cage itself, so during the election, we have to store the ballots. And so right now, we have a chain link cage with cameras that shows exactly what's going on there. It's a little bit too small for our needs. We're able to fit all the ballots in there, but if we needed to get a ballot that's in the back, we have to pull all these carts out to get to the ballots. And so this will allow us to categorize it saying, okay, we just received these from the recorders. We now need a process, they go in this section. They've been processed, they go in this section. So it'll just make it a lot cleaner and more efficient for tracking the ballots.
And save, because staff won't be climbing over bins and lifting things from high elevate, up, high up and heavy.
Giant boxes.
Yeah, potential for injuries.
Okay, so you want to make the cage bigger?
Correct.
Okay. How long can ballots stay in the cage before they have to go in the vault?
I would have to see if Marty knows that answer, but...
To the vault.
But after the campus.
So everything done and counted.
Tom, educate me. So the statute, the statute says we own ballots?
Yes, because we own, we own the voting office. There's no, there's no statute that says we have to have an elections officer. If we had the expertise, the Board of Supervisors could be the elections officer, the people that charge for the elections. That's how it's, that's how it's written in statute, either the election director or officer in charge of elections. So one time, we had Stevens be the elections director. We turned him into the election director. Another time, we had elections under Stevens.
I'm just getting to the ballot piece, though. So the ballots go through elections, Marty is done with them. You're saying that we own those, but the statute says they gotta go in the treasurer's office? But you're saying if it didn't say that, what do they say, treasurer's office or it's a vault?
To the treasurer's vault.
Okay, that's in the statute.
For the retention period, and as I mentioned, I believe...
But if we were to have our own vault?
We can't just walk in and out of there and get ballots willy-nilly. After that point, we have to have a court order. They're secured. Because they're counted.
It sounds like a chicken balance thing to me, that the legislature put into effect that...
Well, either that or they didn't expect Board of Supervisors to have a vault, and they did expect the treasurer to have a vault in the sense.
Hi, how are you?
What are you trying, I was just trying to, you made a comment earlier that...
Because of the potential conflict of having a lack of a so-called reverse chain of command, that's something like, like this McGinley talked about. There's no statute that says there can be a reverse chain of command from the elections director back to the reporter for him to do a hand count or whatever he's gonna do, because at that time, in my opinion, the elections director was insubordinate with the cover of the county attorney to not do what we directed her, well, we directed either one of them, 16602B, which was a hand count of day of ballots, 16602B. So, so since McGinley was saying there's no reverse chain of command from the elections director back to the recorder, that's what he was saying. Because right now, they're received in the mail by the recorder. They do the signature verifications with the recorder, then they go to the election director. Right? So that's the direction of the chain of command there, it's hunky-dory that one.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's no point in time when the elections director can send them back to the recorder for any kind of processing or handling.
But the point is, this is the point I'm making, that's the Board of Supervisors, and that's, that's why this judge was in error to say that, as if he didn't understand that with the permission of the, or the direction of the Board of Supervisors, there are ballots. The elections department is our department. Marty is not an elected official. At a certain time, we had the recorder over the ballots, and that made things a little bit different. But we also had a contract with him to be the...
Do you know what the statute is on the?
On the treasurer's vault?
You know it?
I don't have it with, I can look at, probably gonna be in, yeah.
Trying, I'm trying to look at the, all the, so here's, here's my... The custody of the ballots, who is responsible for the custody of those? Is it us?
If you're gonna say...
That's what I'm trying to get at.
If you're gonna say the elections director has custody of the ballots, which she does.
Storage is separate.
The Board of Supervisors.
What I'm getting at, storage, this, I smell lawsuit all over this, right? So storing them, like Tom says, could be, the legislature just said there's no place to secure to store them. Every county's got a vault in the treasurer's office that will store them. The storing them, like Tom says, could be, the legislature just said there's no place to secure to store them. Every county's got a vault in the treasurer's office that will store them in the treasurer's vault. That's kind of logical. But I'm asking, who is the custodian responsible?
The treasurer.
That's what I'm getting. It's the treasurer doesn't own those ballots, right?
I would need to refer to.
So Marty, who owns the ballots? Who is the custodian of those ballots while they're there for two years? Now, I granted, we need a court order.
Elections director, custodian.
Yes.
So you.
Those are still ours, yeah. Cause she determines, she then goes and has them destroyed after the two years, retention period is up. She's, we let them know, we let them know, we don't touch them again. We don't touch them again.
So we'll take a look at the statute um as well and make sure we got, got an answer for you.
I'm happy to, to research that and give you guys.
Yeah, so Mike, so I'm glad you're here, cause I, this, this is so. To, to Mr. Crosby's point. You know, if we want, I'm already gonna go up and talk to legislature about the. Thing we talked about yesterday with the county attorney regarding the people that get to decide what the diversion fees and, and rates are, who the hell are they to do that?
AIPAC.
I'm gonna go on that one. That's all I'm sold. But on, on this one, this is another opportunity I see that maybe we need to fix something in the statute. Because if, if the, if the supervisors are the custodian of the ballots through the elections director, how the hell is the treasurer coming to play? Why do we even put her in that?
That's the statute sixteen six twenty.
What is it?
Sixteen, sixteen six twenty-four, the deposition of official returns of ballots. After the canvas has been completed, the officer in charge of elections shall deposit the package or envelope contained the ballots in a secure facility managed by the county treasurer, who shall keep it unopened and unaltered for twenty-four months for elections, for federal office, or six months for all other elections. At which time he shall destroy it without opening or examining the contest.
The treasurer shall destroy it? Then we're not the custodian of the, of the records. The way I read that.
I would defer.
I'm happy to give you guys like a legal opinion after, you know, we look at this, just now right here in a work session.
I see where, where Mr. Crosby's gone from, because this is, we're responsible for elections in the county. Ballots are reviewed by. Delegated authority through the board of supervisors to the elections director. So we should own those ballots.
And then section D, if a recount is ordered or a contest begun within six months, the county treasurer may be ordered by the court to deliver the package or envelopes back.
So there's, I think there's a check and balance issue here.
Important question for the county attorney rather than us.
The, the chicken balance may be the legislature designed. That, does she gets to burn them?
Well, no, that the treasurer is kind of like the non-incumbered party or something that gets to be neutral in this. And they're just keeping that way there. There's no, if there's a fight between.
Unless, unless, unless the treasurer can be threatened this way or that, like I talked about earlier. Uh, here's a, a bigger issue, a more important issue. Does canvas mean certify the canvas?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't. So every time they're saying, we got canvas, they're doing this, they're gonna canvas the election here, they're gonna canvas the election there. We're gonna send the canvas and set the other here and there. It does not mean certify the canvas.
That's, again, we got.
So this agenda item is really, I think we brought up the question of the vault because of how we wanna do a remodeling of elections.
I'm, I'm just.
So does it impact, does this decision regarding the vault situation mean that the board would, it would, we need that answer before the board wants to vote on the remodel portion of this agenda item?
I don't want more machines personally.
You wanna break that out?
Should we break these two items out? One on the remodel and one on the machines?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just uh, I'm looking for stuff to fix in the statute. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So and then.
This is the tip-top thing, canvas versus.
Yeah, well, then we get, again, we gotta get that defined more clearly in, in the statute.
So there's two, there's several machines. There's the two DS nine fifties and an OpEx the letter opener. Do you want that?
If we need a letter opener, then they get a letter opener. I go, he's talking the voting machines, yeah.
The voting machines. These are, these are uh tabulators.
I understand.
Okay, so as I understand it, we're required by state law to have machines. Is that correct, Mr.?
No, we're not. Well, and you can say that, that there's an implication in the elections procedure manual that we have them. Okay, but the, there, there's a big difference between what the statute says in the law in the elections procedure manual. And Fuentes has lost a whole bunch of times in, in trying to push what he says is the way it should be in the elections procedure manual. Because anything that's in the elections procedure manual has to be uh like derivative of the law.
Right, he can't add to it, which is what he has to make.
That's what he wants to do all the time.
Stand right now. Where does it stand if, you know?
It, it doesn't stand.
It's up to us.
Always a fight.
To us to decide.
That's us. There's never gonna be a point where we could say, okay, everything's peachy keen with elections now and nobody will ever try to check in.
Just so you know, he's watching us.
Yeah.
And we'll get another letter in the mail. Hey, they're talking about me for this discussion, but it, but again.
Meanwhile, this last election, whether or not we were able to have a machine act, we ended up having machines and they weren't good machines, right?
The tabulators.
They had issues, feed issues.
If we have the election coming up and we get the same problem, no matter what people say, oh, we don't need these machines, we don't have to have these machines. But we end up using the machines and still having the same issues.
We, we had this discussion before, which resulted in the letter that we got, you know.
The nasty gram.
The nasty gram. There is a lot of work to do to get off of the machine crack. If you wanna get off the machines and go to a hand count, there's a significant amount of work and manpower and cost that's gonna be associated with that. We need to have a special discussion, which is what we said last time. We were gonna do is have a special discussion on that, which resulted in the letter, because he said, you're not even allowed to talk about that.
Yeah.
You know, you know, you shouldn't even, but I, I mean, what I, what I, I had talked about you, with you guys last time is doing incremental to, 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 to work the bugs out of it. To get it down and then slowly transition off of the machines.
The problem with that is that the forces of darkness do not want you checking the accuracy of the machines at all in any way, shape or form. And the way to avoid that is do not use them at all.
But, but you, but we can't do that at this point. We're not ready to do that yet.
We're not, no, we're not set up.
We're not set up.
You know, you, you, you gotta train a ton of people. You have to have a process that's gonna meet all, all this, if you micro scale it, I'll, I'll give you.
Then, then you're not gonna get away from the, the fact that what you're trying to do, if you can say, we're gonna, we're gonna handicap twenty-five percent, you're gonna handicap whatever it is. Then, then you're gonna run into the same problem of do not check the accuracy of the voting machines. No.
Right, I, I, I get what you're saying and that's a fight we'll have to fight. But what, what I'm getting at, as far as the process goes, for example, when I go start a new production line. I don't build the full production line that's gonna be the full rate production line. I build a small, low-rate initial production line. Cause I want to vet my processes, my, my quality control. I wanna make sure all the assemblers are doing everything right. You know, there's, there's nothing that we missed when we were engineering it to do that. That's what I'm talking about. You find a lot of problems when you do that and then you fix those problems before you build the full production line. So when it comes to the count, hand counting ballots, just from the experience I had, if you were to try to go cold turkey and say, we're gonna not use the machines. And we're gonna hire all these people and train all these people and go straight, you will have so many issues that we will give ammo to the forces of darkness to beat us relentlessly over the head, which they will do. If you have one little glitch go wrong. So what I, I was saying, what we do is we incrementally move in that direction. You're right, they're gonna cry, cause if we were to do, like I said, twenty-five percent, let's just do a twenty-five percent hand count. Just to practice it, get the processes down, make sure we got the training for the people, we, we vet out how we're gonna do it. It's just, it's just off to the side, nothing to do with the election. We're gonna do this and, and there's a way to do that. And I've been talking to some people about copies and using the copies for practice.
Okay, well, if you look at.
Cause the machine scans and creates an image.
Sixteen six.
The ballots are what's protected and required, but we, we are allowed to access the image.
Sixteen six oh two B is what we voted on, it passed. And that was October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. The next day, the state elections, okay, so that, that day, the twenty-fourth, McIntyre said, that's illegal, okay? The next day, Cory Lorick, the elections director, did not say it was illegal. She said, if you do the sixteen six oh two B, you have to X, Y, and Z and all this kind of stuff. You have to limit it to five races, I think is what it was.
Right.
The following day, the twenty-sixth, I signed something that basically was, was supposed to satisfy Cory Lorick. Whatever way is the legal way to do it, that's the way we're gonna do it. Okay, sixteen six oh two B, limited to five races and whatever, whatever she wanted. I can get the document.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the twenty-eighth, that's when Gallin came up with the so-called catlet letter. Which said, you can, you could count everything, including the early ballots. And that is when the, when we went to court, the judge was saying, you can't use sixteen six oh two B to justify. You, you can't count all the ballots, including early ballots, using sixteen six oh two B. And said, I know. I know that already, okay? But that's what, that's, that's why, why they said what they said in the court. Is because between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-eighth, this catlet letter came out. And that was from the. Afuentes, no, uh, previous secretary of state, no, Bernovich.
Bernovich was the HE.
Okay, so this was, this was from a, from a Bernovich underling named Catlet, who's now a appeals court judge.
Okay.
Okay, so, so between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-eighth, everything changed from only day of ballot check to count everything. Okay, and so i- if, in hindsight, it would have been better if that catlet letter wouldn't have come out, but that's hindsight.
So.
Alright, so back, back to, back, back, we gotta have a separate, after the budget stuff is done, we gotta sit down and have a elections, special elections.
And then once we have an elections director in the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's, to me, it's game. It's not just says, oh, you know, human error is so much worse and these machines are, they're not accurate. And we know that they're not accurate.
The country was built on the concept of checks and balances. Ronald Reagan's famous spoke, you know, trust but verify, right? So, you know, I, I, I don't buy their argument at all, that there's this, you can't hand count. I think that's just nuts.
So Mr. Fonzie, they think you're wrong about the machines are perfect. They're not. And you look, if you look at our last election.
Nothing's perfect that get, especially if it gets touched and handled by humans.
Especially this last election, how can they?
I got you.
I'm sorry, so just one.
I, I got you. That's why we gotta set it up a special one, a tour.
Mr. Chris.
You're Mr. Crosby.
Oh, I, I noted that you said something like, when you build whatever you're gonna, you're gonna do it incrementally and start with a smaller one and turn it into a big one, it's like that. That's a great plan, great plan. And that's what the people that built these voting machines have been doing for decades. And they got it down.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But you're gonna undo it. Alright, so we're gonna break out the approval for the machines and the approval for the remodel and the approval for the letter openers.
Three, different items, yeah.
Okay.
And then, so when we vote, we can vote yes and no, but then just abstain on something or say, we wanna go back to work session to decide that one aspect of the machines or? I mean, that's why I'm trying to.
We can, we can have that discussion in the, after we read it, we can have that debate between us.
You'll have three items. One will be for the tabulators, the DS nine fifty tabulators, to be clear what the machine is that we're, the two machines we're purchasing. These are the ones that we send the, when we have mail ballots, they go through that machine to be tabulated.
Those, cause the eight fifty was only was shooting them out.
Right, we had some issues with the trace.
Okay.
Um, so that's the two machines. And then the, the OpEx is the automated letter opener. That we talked about is really, the current one we have is very loud and, and um.
So my question is, so when we're talking about machines, like that slow one, we should get.
It's gone.
And then we're gonna have a backup.
Right, and so the backup is the two nine, nine fifties, so you can keep the eight fifty that had tabulation problems, but it's, it was fixed. Or the draw, the trade problem.
Trade, okay.
Do we have it in time for the special, for the Gahalva election to test it?
We would wanna keep the eight fifty in place, running that for that, that election. Um, because we have to do the LNA and we have to do all that other stuff to get it in place.
Before the election, so yeah, okay, okay.
So we wouldn't have any, really any new machines by, by then?
Not by the election.
But it's gonna be a smaller election, so plenty of.
Very small.
And then the remodel construction, so we'll have the dollar.
And is that, we're gonna, we've talked about how possible, hand count?
About, I'm sorry?
During the special election.
That's right. Not the Gahalva one we can't do.
Okay.
Can't do that one. Can't, can't even talk about that one.
Okay.
Because that's a special.
That's a special one?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a gym.
But, but we could have this discussion again when it comes to the jail district uh vote as an opportunity.
Have to be here at the two-day meeting by Zoom.
There's, there's a, there's a lot of fun stuff that the uh lawyers, the judges, the secretaries of whatever, the attorney generals, the, and the reporters are gonna have a field day with the two over the next couple of months as we have that discussion. But that, that is another potential opportunity to do it is in November.
Okay.
Which is a small election, which is nice and easy with only one question to go yes or no. It, it would be very easy to count, I'm just saying.
If we get it in time, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's another, that's another, that's another. So that.
I was, I was stating, so I had the, you know.
Yeah, I got you. You're trying to see, there, there's a lot of uh moving pieces that overlap. And you're trying to, I get what you're trying to do. You're trying to understand how.
We don't say that this possibility, there's a timeframe which we have to work in and everyone's, you know, then they come to a certain conclusion that's wrong. So I'm just trying to be a little bit.
Well, then you gotta answer a lot of people's questions too, cause I get the emails, people asking, you gotta have some background knowledge to be able to answer.
Right.
What is that? Is that you?
No.
I don't know where that's coming from. That's not me.
Anything on the, on the election stuff? We're good with the potential spin?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, so Marty, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Alright, so then uh state and federal legislature, oh, uh, the, the wolf thing.
Oh, yeah.
How, how are we doing on that, Sharon?
Uh, yeah, so Tascal um from the eastern Arizona counties coalition is coming in May, oh, I'm gonna say May fifteenth.
So big, so and it's not just all, I'll have that date, but it's in May, early May that he'll be coming to have a work session with the board about the gray wolf. And the whole endangered species.
The endangered species and what um the board can, what actions the board can take, if any, that would be, have an impact on the situation.
Um, I think it's really important because, you know, lab to crinches, to all the ones that are in that precinct fifty are affected by this. I think um at least, can we have Jane do like a, a press release so that they would know?
Know to listen to that.
Yeah.
Or come and attend.
Yes. And as soon as she gets that, then I'd like to send it out to all of us.
At ten a.m.
I've, I've been made aware that there was a collared wolf that literally walked four miles from my house, crossed the dry lake bed, up into the Chiricahua's.
Really?
Came out through the Grams, Mount Graham, came across all the way down just to the, what would that be, west of Wilcox. Crossed the highway, crossed the railroad tracks, went by where the power plant is, the Apache Power Plant, crossed the dry lake bed and went into the Chiricahua's.
Did it kill anything along the way?
No, no, but that, they're, they just tracked it on the, on the, so.
They track them.
Yeah, so, so they are not just in that Leslie Canyon area anymore. They are in the county and they could be.
Well, they're, they're just north of Douglas.
Yeah, oh, well, that's what I'm saying. That's the, that Leslie, so they're not just there anymore. They've got collared data, GPS collared data, tracking these things. They are, they are here in this county. And I can understand why, perfectly why the ranchers are uptight about this.
Yeah, cause they've already had like the crinches and a lot of them already had it killed. And then, then you know, when you talk about taking them in the Mexico list, the smart guys are, hey, we're just gonna shoot them.
Oh, cause they're in Mexico.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do that.
They can do that. Pascal has been following this issue for at least ten to twenty years, so he has a wealth of knowledge about the whole.
And I've got a lot of familiarity with it, cause I remember going through this at the state level, but, but they keep changing the number of when the definition is established. And that's the problem. So this, oh, we're gonna, we hit the hundred and sixty, we'll deem it established. Now, oh, now they raised it to three.
Twenty.
Three twenty is now established. So, and then, then there's the census problem, right? Where they're, they're only counting. Where they're, they're only counting collared animals. And then they, they use those collared animals to try to get out there to see if there's how many uncollared animals they have. But if you had a pack that broke off that does not have a collared animal in that pack, they don't, they can't find that pack.
Yeah.
So their accuracy with the amount of animals that are out there is not very confident.
And now it's all, and it's into New Mexico too, like.
Yeah. So, so I'd be real, when that guy comes, yeah, we definitely need that.
Incredible.
And I think game and fish needs to assert themselves against the Fish and Wildlife Service on this one. And we need this commodity to help us get this thing delisted. That's for sure. And then game and fish needs to regulate it like the law says, that they are responsible for regulating game and non-game animals in the state of Arizona. Are we in the? And I was the first, hey.
I think, are we on the new business stat?
Yeah. Well, I just wrote the federal, state, the federal piece. I wanted to get on the, you know, the resolution to deal with the wolf in Cochise County. But, uh, and that's it. I don't have anything else on that. You guys got anything? But I got, I got, I'm up to like four statutes now we gotta change.
And the legislative summit, the CSA legislative summit that they have every fall, they, they're sending out a save the date. That'll be in Yuma.
Uh.
Yuma.
Yuma. It travels around the state every year. So it'll be.
I go to Yuma all the time though, man. I'm always in Yuma.
When is it?
I think it's like October twenty eighth through the thirtieth. Bill sent out a save the date.
That's right. Why could she?
Just, uh, coming with a.
So the Legislative Policy Summit is, um, when the County Supervisors Association gets all the county supervisors together that want to attend, as well as county managers come and county clerks go as well because they have a training. And, uh, they discuss legis, prior to that, we put in our legislative proposals to CSA. They compile all the various legislative proposals that counties submit to the organization. And then there's a discussion and then one day there's a vote as to which proposals the organization will.
Oh, that's an opportunity to bring up the challenge to Goddard, the Goddard decision.
Which one is Goddard?
That, that is the one man, one vote rule that took away the two senators per county and made him by district.
Uh.
So I would like to go back to that.
So bringing all those to that table and presentation.
Yeah, we were, we were talking, talking about that.
Those proposals usually are due to CSA in late August. They wait till after the session closes and then we start working on that.
Sharon and I, Sharon, two senators per county? Yeah. So the problem is, Sharon and I were talking about this, uh, when you go up there to try to put in an amendment to the way that her formula is calculated. Maricopa County shuts it down every time because they've got so many state senators. Now, representatives, there's nothing you can do about that because that's a portion of the public. But if it was two senators per county, then the rural counties would have a little bit of leverage to try to influence the changing to the herd formula. But you can't change the herd formula now because any change of the herd formula is automatically seen as a herd cut to Maricopa County. So whether they're Democrat or Republican, there's, there's actually bipartisan unity for that very reason. And Maricopa County just crushes the rural counties who need the herd revenue.
When anybody.
More, more than anybody, because we don't have the population to justify the maintenance of the road. So when you try to go in there, they've got so many people and they can fix a road and they, yeah, that road's got forty thousand people a day driving on it. But we've got more mileage and yeah, be, because we've got more miles of road, we got less people driving on that road, but we still gotta maintain these roads. So the herd, herd formula to try to adjust it to increase it for rural counties by adding miles, road miles, maintain road miles to that herd formula. Every time that goes up, it gets killed because Maricopa automatically sees that. And that's our, one of our arguments that we talked about to justify they, 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 the tyranny of the, uh, fifty one percent, the majority over the, where our system was designed to protect the, the minority, in this case rural counties. So that will be a nifty thing to go over because Sullivan's gonna cry because he gets a lot of money from Maricopa County, right? So that would be a fight.
He might cry.
That would be a fight like you would not believe, but we gotta, we gotta, we gotta go back there. Keep the representatives apportioned by population, just like it is at the federal level.
Oh.
And then go back, go back to pre nineteen sixty six, if anyone was somewhere in there. Nineteen sixty six is when this, the Goddard decision was decided that instead of two senators per county, we're gonna apportion senators by population as well. So you basically have two houses of representatives. Which was astonishing to me because the federal government is two senators per state. And the analogy to two senators per state and two senators per county is identical.
Yeah.
But it's the same thing with the, with the city council. They got six people in the city council and nobody's saying that they have too many representatives. But if we wanted to have five here, no, no, we don't want to expand government. So that's the same thing that can happen when you try to get two, two state senators.
It's gonna be the same. It's still gonna be thirty. It's still gonna be thirty.
Senators, state, state, it's the House that you're concerned.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same number of senators. It's not, it's not.
Understand the, the, uh, the, the logic of, of the one man, one vote thing that.
Yeah, but you have that in the House. Because, and again, how do they come to that conclusion when the, the federalist design of a Republican form of government, which is guaranteed, by the way, by the constitution, has apportionment by population for the House of Representative, and then the states have representation by having their senators. So it's the same thing at the micro level at the state, right?
I agree.
But as being somebody who's born here, it's always been the same. As so goes Maricopa, so does go the state. Because we haven't had any, you know, some.
But it's become more of an issue now because of the population growth of Maricopa County.
Even much more.
It is now a time, I believe, to revisit that Goddard decision.
Yeah.
I would note that that also has to do with protection of our water.
That is also another issue. You're a hundred percent right. And that's, we, we are getting Maricopa County telling, telling us how to deal with.
Did you want to talk about, uh, the P O E? And yes, okay, tell me what.
This is under the new business section. Okay.
So tomorrow, um, I talked to Richard Sherrill, who's on the Transportation Board of ADAT, who is willing to take money that's geared to one project and transfer it to be able to fund the connector road that we need to have done since we lost the grant. So he asked that myself and the mayor come to advocate for this so that he can show support in the community so that he can then do that. You know, when he goes to the June meeting, then I guess that's their big board meeting. Um, so that's, it's a nine o'clock meeting tomorrow. So that's what we're gonna do. And, and I mean, when you think of what the sheriff was telling us yesterday, with DOD supposedly coming, uh, the federal training or, you know, probably do the Cochise College, with all this going on, I mean, this is the key moment for economic development in Douglas and that whole one ninety one. This is, it's like, uh, what do they call it? Clickball mass that's forming. And we gotta manage it well. We gotta be all on the same page. We gotta be figuring this out. All of us need to be talking. And I mean, this was a fluke. I just called them up because I've been wanting to call them for two months. And they, I said, what can I do to get to the head of how this all gets decided? And he goes, you guys gotta come to this meeting. So, you know, finding out the information. So at least now I think I know a strategy. And, um, I talked to Arden, who've been investors for eighteen years. And this is something I wanted to give you. So we talked about how do we establish economic zones? It's interesting, similar to you guys, that they sent me this whole thing about how it's done and where it's done. And I guess there's maps that we can figure out. There's been opportunity zones, economic zones for trade zones. But finding it out has been. And supposedly this is, this is a good like, like roadmap to figure out everything. So it's.
Yeah, and we can bring in development services and.
Right. So.
She's gone. I was gonna say she's.
Yeah. So, um, I think this is the beginning of the key. I mean, if we can get, if, if, uh, Mr. Sherrill is willing to, you know, reapportion or reallocate money for one project up there.
But he's gonna recommend that. He doesn't have the board.
No, but he says that if we're there and we advocated, it gives him more of a strong status.
Gotcha.
So when he goes to the full board, he can say, hey, this is what needs to, but so I'm willing to reallocate the funds of my district from this one project to the connector road. And he feels that it's enough that he can reallocate that we can actually have the money to say it's, it's gonna happen, that we're gonna build the connector road. So that's the key. Because if you don't have the road, how can you build a four hundred million dollar, which they're gonna go into like, they say groundbreaking, they're gonna do, gonna do design study, they're gonna announce in.
So, yeah. Yeah. So they're, they're the design for the road. They're.
But if you don't have the money for the road, but you're still gonna design a road that you don't have money for. It's like, you know, those, what they say, are you?
Do it all the time.
You know, appropriate a bridge that goes nowhere.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, you know.
Correct.
So this to me is really, really key. And I'm gonna ask him that maybe if we could get, you know, a letter from all three of us.
True.
In support of it, um, if he needs letters from the city council in Douglas or, um, maybe the sheriff. I mean, anybody that we can get to actually show and advocate that this road needs to have the money appropriated. Because to me, I, I think all these meetings that are going on, and there are so many meetings that are going on, everyone's got something into it. But it's not, I don't see it.
We're getting ready to redo all the zoning down there. I just saw that email. All the zoning's gonna be redone too.
So.
Compared to commercial industrial.
And the key is, is also how is that gonna happen? Because it's not just about warehouse buildings being built and being plowing that economic development, right? It's about how you get businesses. Now, when I talk to Arden, it's very interesting because say the federal, the, the feds come and they're, they're gonna be doing the security border, border security. So maybe they'll do air drones. Well, maybe you're gonna get John Deere, you're gonna get all these companies come. Let's do apprenticeships where they can actually teach the kids, you know, there's, there's about six or seven school, high school students, you know? Why don't we talk about how we can, what's the word, educate these kids in a field that's high technology and good jobs, right? So if, to me, what the key thing is in the next two years is how we manage everyone and all this that's coming at the same time in a good plan that does the best we can for economic development and growing Douglas. So we can get it from being seventy percent on access to actually getting enough jobs so that we can have some real serious development where people are actually making good money, that they can buy the cars, they can build houses. And like what you were talking, really bring in that age group of, you know, high school students up to whatever fifty, learning new trades, whether it's, you know, the drone technology or whatever else the feds are thinking they need and sustain it. And with the port of engine with trade with cattle. And I asked this one, uh, county, what's the new Arizona border counties?
Coalition.
Coalition. And I said, okay, is this port really viable? And their answer was, you're not gonna get the produce you get in O'Gallus, but it's the mining that's happening in Sonora and Kanane. And they're actually opening other mines. So minerals will be coming through and of course cattle. So it's just really, it's, it's just an opportune time or right at that precipice where it could really work really well for us. But I think we need to be involved in it really heavily. Because what I see happening, you get this group over here and this group over there and that group over there, a lot of them are developers who just, you know, it's like a quick turnaround for them.
Well, they're also trying to get their piece of the pie.
Right.
And then, you know, it's the quick, the quicker the dead, you know? So everybody's gonna start moving really fast to start grabbing stuff. And they may not necessarily care about the planning of other things. They just wanna grab their.
Their piece. So the hospital is key. And, you know, as we were talking about the mental health, so that's gotta be part. And I don't know, is there any master plan that anyone's done that takes in all these different key issues? You know, the cattle, the minerals, the tourism, I mean, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand people over in AP.
Sounds like you got a great idea. Maybe you should run with it. Put it, put it together.
Well, and that's.
Somebody should do, sounds like.
As well as animal control.
Hopefully. So, but I think, I mean, all of this is really important conversation, but I think some of it too is goes to a long-term strategic plan of the county. And that's something I would like to discuss with the board at a future date is, is setting up that long term.
And we have to do, because a lot of people, it's, it's all kind of like, you can see the energy just there.
Right.
And it's just ready, they're all ready to be hit. But this is a point where we can direct them and we have a plan that takes all the key industries and the key social needs. And then you can get Daniels to be able to give us all the statistics on how it could help the budget.
Right.
That's gonna be key. So we should, I know another thing to do.
I know. But we're, we'll, okay, we do have a. We're late. But go ahead.
Okay. I have just included some notes, which are primarily, uh, on the following page with a, with a, uh, dots. And bullet points, you just talked about bullet points on, on this next page. And this has to do with a Goldwater Institute study, which had to do with tax cuts versus more taxation.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that, this is just very fundamental stuff having to do with free market economics. This, uh, this thing says opportunity zone designation. So, uh, I'm just gonna critique this just because I just, I just laid eyes on it just right now. So we've got this, we've got this problem and the problem is capital gains. So we need to reduce proper capital gains. Well, well, who came up with that problem?
The feds did.
The government, the government did. Okay. So you have to have, you have to have some way to get out of this, of this problem that's, that the government created. Okay. So the, so what they wanna do is, oh, they want tax incentives. So the problem is taxes. So you have to have tax incentives to, to, to cure that problem of, of taxes. Well, who came up with those taxes? The government. Okay. So, and then at the bottom, I just wrote, there's no such thing as a tax cut without a concomitant spending reduction. Because if all you do is let this person out of paying their fair share of tax burden, somebody else is gonna pay it. And it's not gonna be the lower class. It's not gonna be the person who was provided the tax incentive. It's gonna be the middle class. And so what he's gonna do is you're gonna increase the size of the lower economic stratus by taxing the middle class into the lower economic stratus. And this is a bad thing to do. Okay.
Thanks. We have a special session, executive session we need to go to. So is there anything else here? All right. So let's adjourn. Oh, but next meeting will be a possible executive session in the executive conference room to discuss Amicus Brief, uh, in support of Penal County. All right. So we are adjourned.